Good evening and welcome to the October 3, 2023, 2024, Meeting of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven members. We have six this evening. Each member volunteers their time and is a Bloomington resident. Members are appointed by the city council. The Planning Commission is advisory to the city council. For most items, the commission makes recommendations, and the city council has the final decision-making authority. We have one of those items this evening. There are certain applications that the Planning Commission can approve or deny on its own, subject to the appeal to the city council, and we have one of those as well. For each item, there will be a staff report, then a chance for the applicant to present, then a chance for any member of the public to provide testimony, and then the commission will close the public hearing and discuss the item before the action is taken. Our first business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we will start with item one. For item one, it is continued from our September 19 meeting, and so the public hearing is open, but we will still have time to keep that open and hear from the community as well. So Planner Crowell, we'd love for you to do the staff report.
All right, let's see if I can get this up. Okay, great. Good evening, Planning Commission. So the first item tonight relates to the parcels at 8525 and 8545 Penn Ave South. The sites currently zoned are three and in a planned development overlay, and the comprehensive plan guidance is on moderate-density residential. The site itself is just under two acres, and then the request tonight is a Type III preliminary and final plat to combine those lots to 15 townhome lots and then one common lot. So as you might have saw in the staff report, there is a little bit of history with this project and site, and so just want to give a little context, particularly for commission members that maybe weren't on the commission back in 2020, and then for members of the public, just to kind of help set some context. So in October of 2020, the city council approved a comprehensive plan amendment, a rezoning application, preliminary and final plat, and then a preliminary and final development plan for a 15-unit townhome development. And then in May of 2021, the applicant had applied for a change of condition that was related to access requirements on Penn Ave. That is a county roadway. So Hennepin County had required emergency vehicle access only versus a kind of right-in, right-out access as was originally proposed. The city council had denied that change in condition application, and then the applicant subsequently appealed that denial to the Second Judicial District Court. So then after kind of it played out in the courts, the city council then did adopt a resolution approving that requested change related to access in August of 2022. And so during that time, building and kind of moving forward in the development process was stalled as it played out in the courts, and so the kind of two-year approval period that we grant for the development plans was kind of stalled and then kind of reestablished there in August of 2022, so would have been good through August of 2024. That has also since been extended one year now into August 8 of 2025. And so why are we here tonight, or why are you seeing a plat again? So the, as the applicant, oh, I guess I should also mention, for folks that maybe have lived near the site or have driven by the site, you'll notice that a lot of grading and tree removal work has already started on the site, and that's been consistent with approved grading plan from the city and does continue to be monitored by water resources and building inspection staff, kind of looking at erosion control and soil stabilization on that site until buildings would be there. And so with that, as they're continuing to move forward through the remaining elements of their development, they have now changed the initial floor plan layouts for the townhome units. And with the change in floor plan, it did adjust the property lines for those individual townhome lots slightly, and so it does require a new preliminary and final plat. And so this is just to show a side-by-side comparison of the preliminary plat that was approved in 2022 and the plat that you see before you here tonight. So again, they're not changing the number of units. If you kind of look at it from this level, it doesn't really look all that different, and that's, it's really because the individual townhome lots have just shifted slightly. So I believe the lots are like three feet longer than they were in 2022, and then you'll see the kind of change in access that was shown, that right-in, right-out access on Penn Ave is now just an emergency vehicle-only access on Penn Ave. So just wanted to kind of provide that comparison and kind of what we're looking at tonight. There's also an associated minor revision to final development plans for the change in floor plans. That is an administrative kind of application review and approval. And so what you're looking at tonight is just the plat. So just as a reminder, just as another reference in our kind of pyramid of discretion, there's a lot of kind of related items in history to this project, but what we're looking at tonight is just the preliminary and final plat. And kind of on that level of discretion, it is on the lower end of discretion when reviewing, kind of mainly for, does it meet code requirements and does it meet the findings for the plat? Looking at the preliminary plat in a little bit more detail, again, it exceeds our minimum site area requirements as well as our minimum site width. Looking at impervious surface coverage, we would allow a maximum of 80%. And this proposal is at about 63%. Looking at units per acre, in the R3 zoning district, we would allow up to eight units per acre, and this project is at eight units per acre. And in the moderate-density residential guidance, we allow between five and 15 units per acre. So this proposal is in compliance with that. So just kind of giving a little overview, the image on the right is just to kind of help show there's a lot of lines on the plat, and so you can have the lines for the individual townhome lots themselves. And then this is showing the outlines of the buildings themselves too, to kind of show some of those site plan components. So you see full access to the site off of West 86 Streets, so that's kind of on the south end of the site, some additional guest parking stalls, and then the emergency vehicle-only access on Penn Ave, kind of in the northwest corner of the site. There's a four-unit, a five-unit, and a six-unit townhome building for the total of 15 lots. And then on the one common lot, that would be owned and maintained by a homeowners association, and this is a pretty standard plating approach for a townhome development. Not to get too into the weeds or make it more complicated, but because this plat is adjacent to a county roadway, Hennepin County does also review it and provide comments, and they had noted that Penn Avenue does require 40 feet of right-of-way, and the plat that you saw in the staff report showed 33 feet. This was communicated to the applicant, and I just received the updated plat this morning showing that 40 feet, so I just want to have it here on the slide because it wasn't in your packet. And so really, the change is that right-of-way along Penn Ave, instead of 33 feet, is now 40 feet. It will have a 10-foot bikeway and walkway easement, and then the buildings themselves will be 20 feet from the right-of-way line, which is what was approved in the preliminary and final development plan for this site. Here's just the image of the final plat that helps clean it up a little bit, a little less lines for you. Again, showing those 15 townhome lots and the one common lot. And then again, the final plat, as was submitted in the packet, showing that 33 feet to the final plat that addresses Hennepin County's concern, which would be then recorded again, so showing that 40 feet instead of 33 feet. We did receive two written testimonies or correspondence. One was received before the agenda was published, so it was included in the packet, and then one of those was received after the agenda was published, so it was emailed to the Planning Commission, and then we also printed a copy here, so you have that for reference tonight. So I think with that, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary and final plat, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and then I believe we have the applicant online as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Planner Crowell, can you walk us through what the zoning requirements of the emergency vehicle access drive would be? My concern is that residents would use it, even though it's just for emergency vehicles, as a great way to head northbound on Penn.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cunningham, I guess I'm not aware of, off the top of my head, the dimensional requirements needed for the emergency vehicle access. I know that it is required to be signed, and then it's a little hard to see on here, but I think the intent was the driveway, as you can see, is also like kind of angled, and so is trying to, I think, help avoid making it not so obvious that there is a kind of driveway entrance there, but then it will be signed to say that it's only for emergency vehicles. The applicant might be able to speak to that a little bit as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Crowell, going from 40 feet right-of-way to 33 feet, that does not affect the placement of the townhomes, correct? It's just a line on a drawing, basically.
Yep. Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookton, that is correct. So yeah, you can see on the plat where it showed the 33 feet, they show a building setback of 27 feet. And so when you then make that 40 feet, the setback becomes 20, and then they are allowed a 20-foot setback for that, so it is in compliance.
Commissioner White.
Thank you. Just looking, I'm new to the commission, so I haven't been part of the discussions previously, so it's just more of a point of curiosity about parking on the site. Are there parking, is there parking with each townhome and then the six guest spots that I see? I'm just curious what the allowed, what the parking provisions are.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner White, yeah, so the parking requirements, don't recall off the top of my head, but I know it's accounted for each unit, kind of has a two-car garage, so you're kind of accounting for two spaces on each townhome lot, so that's 30. And then based on the minimum kind of off-street parking, I believe there's an additional six guest stalls to get to that 36. So I know that 36 was the minimum requirement, so it is compliant, but it's kind of accounting for two parking spots on each lot and then those six kind of common parking spots.
Thank you.
Any other additional questions? Commissioner Isa.
Thank you, Chair. Does the city have any data on the amount of traffic on the intersection of Penn? I know there's software where you could see each road, like 86, or that intersection.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Isa, I am not aware. I might turn slightly to engineering staff. I don't know if they have any comments on that, but I don't have that information.
Thank you.
Commissioner White.
Sorry again if y'all have talked about this before, but I'm curious about the infiltration basins. I see one on the northwest side by Penn. I believe that backs up to some private property, and then I see one on the northeast side. I'm not sure if that, how close that is to Upper Penn. I'm just curious, if you could just tell me a little bit about the design of those? Are they below ground? Are they? I'm concerned about whether there's going to be a lot of standing water, if there's going to be a lot of issues with flooding of those.
Yeah. Chair Albrecht, Commissioner White, I believe those are kind of meant to be underground or to allow kind of water filtration. I admittedly don't know too much about kind of some of that designer, more on the engineering side, so there might be some other colleagues that could address that, or that the applicant might be able to speak to that a little bit better than I can.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Crowell. We will turn now to the applicant, Mr. Furlong. Would you, we'll make you a panelist here. Would you like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you.
Fantastic. Hi, I'm Steve Furlong, Principal of Penn Lake City Homes. Apologies for not being in person this evening. I'm out of town, unfortunately. Planner Crowell, excellent explanation of what we're requesting here, and I can give you a little bit more brief background. When we set out to do this project in 2019, our intent was to deliver ownership housing units that were affordable to 80% of the area median income. And then, of course, in 2020, construction costs exploded during the early stages of the pandemic, and then we went through quite the cycle of interest rate changes. And now, to do affordability at that level, it absolutely has to be subsidized. And during this process, we did apply for Minnesota Housing Impact Ponds, and unfortunately, we're not awarded, which brings us to today and the request that we're submitting with this plat application to shift the lines slightly, and that is to accommodate one aspect of what we set out for initially, and that is to deliver ownership, single-level living units to the marketplace, which are desperately needed, but they have to be market-rate now. And so we went through our architectural design, and this past spring had a conversation with planning on what was required and the needed floor plan size, and then the need to articulate the facing of the garages required us to need a little bit more space to make it all fit and deliver that community need for single-level living. And so this plat revision essentially, that's already been approved, and the changes that we're requesting here to accommodate that architectural design that we have now completed. And I'm very excited to show all of those plans to the public. It's about ready. We want to finish this hopefully last leg of the process, and we can get to that and ideally be able to begin construction very soon. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Furlong. There were some additional questions for Mr. Crowell about, that maybe you can shed some light on, about the emergency access, how that is done, and your take on that, and then also those infiltration locations on site. Would you mind just talking a little bit about those two items?
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioner. So the emergency access design has been reviewed by our fire marshal and by the county and approved. The design that is on this plat application is the same as what was previously approved, so it meets all of the standards, but I want to highlight a couple of things. There will be signage indicating that this is an emergency exit only. We are going to change the design of the roadway from the main, the main drive to that emergency access will have a different surfacing. So we'll change from batuminous to something that would also indicate that you should not be driving through here. I believe it's in the plan, in the site plan, it shows that there's a surmountable curb, slight surmountable curb there, and so the goal is to make it obvious that you should not be exiting there. It's an emergency access. And I'm also exploring this option within our bylaws for the association that we can penalize unit owners if they use that drive. So I feel like, I feel like we've done as much as we can do with that to make it within code requirements and to keep folks from not using that access. The stormwater is a very detailed plan that has been thoroughly reviewed by the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District and approved. So they have gone through all of our plans for treating the stormwater on-site. There was a question about the basins. They are vegetated wall basins. There should not be standing water in them very often at all. And then we also have in the plan a subsurface infiltration basin, which is where the water will be moved to by gravity and then allowed to slowly percolate into the ground. Did I miss any questions?
Sorry, I think there was one more, which I missed actually, about the design for parking, just the number of stalls available. If you would just confirm that it's 36.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. So as Planner Crowell indicated, each unit has two garage parking spaces and two driveway spaces. So there are actually a total of 60 parking spaces for the units, four times 15, 60, and then the additional six guest spaces. So in total, there's parking on-site for 66 vehicles.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll turn to Commissioners. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Going once? All right. Thank you, Mr. Furlong.
Thank you.
All right, we are now, the public hearing is open, so we're going to now turn to public testimony. We will invite anyone who wants to testify on this item to come up, sign in. Let us know who you are, introduce yourself, and then make your remarks at this time. All right, seeing none, Mr. Markergard, is there anyone online?
Chair Albrecht, no one online for this item.
Okay. I'll give it one more second in case anyone is interested in testifying. All right.
Does that include asking questions? Do we get to ask questions with testifying, or does testifying mean you want to like make a statement?
Yes. Yes, actually. So public testimony is the opportunity for you to say whatever you want about the project. However, the time at which the questions are asked were questions by the commission for both the applicant and for the city staff. If there are questions that are asked that we find that are rise to the level that we would like to ask staff or the applicant, we can do so after the public hearing is closed. All right, looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion passes 6-0. All right, we are on to discussion by the commission. Any thoughts? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is, I think, the third or fourth time you and I have seen this, and the scope has been getting a little more narrow and narrow every time we see it, and what we have in front of us tonight is a very narrow scope. And so we're not being asked to determine whether we think the final site and building plans are appropriate or the number of units is sufficient or too much or too little. That's really not what we're here for this evening. It's about this plat. And as Mr. Crowell described for us, we have very little discretion when it comes to plats and how much latitude we can take on an application like that. And the way I see it, we, the plat application meets all of the required findings, and honestly, it's almost identical to what we've seen before. I felt like I was looking at one of those Highlight Magazine pictures where you got to find the differences between the two. I could barely tell. And so to me, this is fairly straightforward, and honestly, I think if we recommended denial and the city council denied this, I think we'd be right back in court and would lose again, and that's, that would be irresponsible to the taxpayers. So I will be approving this, recommending approval of this application.
Any other commissioners? I will add my two cents as well. Yes, Commissioner Cookton, we have seen this item a handful of times. It had lengthy discussions, one of which was that emergency access. I was happy to hear Mr. Furlong mention that the material was changing between that so that folks were discouraged to use that as a regular in-and-out. I do find that having the one access in is actually a safer plan than had originally been proposed or had been required by the city. So I am in support of this application. I agree, we have very little discretion, and I believe that the application meets all of the findings, so I will be also in favor of approving this item. The discussion. All right, looking for a motion. Commissioner Cookton.
Madam Chair, in case PL 2024-135, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend city council adopt a resolution approving a Type III preliminary and final plat to subdivide two lots into 15 townhome lots and one common lot, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the recommendation on the screen. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes 5-1. All right, that item will show up on the October 14 consent agenda of the city council. Thank you. All right, item two of our agenda also has a public hearing, and I believe Planner Crowell also has the staff report. Welcome.
Yeah, all right, back for one more. So the item in this case is related to the parcel at 9555 James Ave South. It's currently zoned I-2 and then guided industrial in our comprehensive plan. The site itself is just under two acres, and then the request tonight is a type III preliminary and final plat The site itself is a little over eight acres, and then the building is 113,531 square feet. And then the request tonight is for a conditional use permit for an instructional center. And I'll just note, it was in the staff report, and this was communicated to the applicant as well, but this use is actually being proposed to become a permitted use through the streamlining development ordinance, which is scheduled to go to city council on October 14th. If that change is approved, a conditional use permit would no longer be needed for this use, but it still would be required to follow all of our provisions of city code and any applicable building and fire codes. The applicant is just wanting to make sure that they can operate as soon as they can and didn't want to have any potential delays, and so they wanted to move forward with the conditional use permit application here. So that's what you're seeing before you tonight. Just looking a little closer in aerial view of the building, and then just kind of a rough estimation of kind of where the use would be in this building. It occupy 9,904 square feet space, and that represents about 9% of the overall building floor area. Minnesota ADAS Solutions is an instructional facility that offers specialized advanced driver assistance systems, or ADAS, technician training. And they provide specialized training to their partner calibration centers that leads to a certification as a calibration technician. And so the use for this facility would be to train individuals on ADAS with a test vehicle. As you see, there's an overhead door kind of on the north part of the building where a vehicle would enter, and then they'd have open space to kind of run their diagnostics testing and the training that they do on the vehicle. And then some additional classroom space and office space in the building. There's no exterior building modifications proposed with this application outside of a potential exterior wall sign in the future. This application would not require any additional lighting or landscaping. However, the site would just need to make sure it's in compliance with its originally approved landscape and lighting plan for the building, which staff did review and is still in compliance. And then there, I guess the one site improvement will be the installation of a bike rack on site. And then interior improvements to walls, lighting and flooring are also proposed and would go through that building permit process. One of the things that we often look at is parking. So based on the existing uses in the office warehouse building, 299 parking spaces would be required, and this site currently provides 415 parking spaces. So there is sufficient or adequate parking supply to accommodate those existing uses. There is some vacant office and warehouse space in this building, so as new tenants come in, that is something that staff would continue to look at, the occupancy mix, making sure that it's meeting its off-street parking requirements with those uses and kind of treat it as each use kind of comes in and that that mix changes. So for the purposes of this use and the existing uses there, there is adequate parking supply. So with that, I can help answer any questions that you have. We also have the applicant here in person if you have any questions, and staff is recommending approval and the recommendations on the screen.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cookden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Crowell, am I understanding there will be vehicles in the building?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookden, that is correct. So a vehicle would kind of enter through that overhead door, would be parked in the space, you know, engine off, and then they're running their, the training from my understanding is kind of really on the electronic systems of a vehicle, and so they're kind of running their computer that's plugged in, kind of doing that diagnostic testing of the vehicle in the space.
Follow-up question, and I think this is probably a question for the applicant. Do you know if there's protection around those steel columns there?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookden, I am not aware, and so that could be a question for the applicant. And I know our fire marshal also had some additional comments and requirements that would be reviewed through the building permit as well on some of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. We'll open it now for the applicant to speak. Like to come up, introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm CJ Peters. I'm the owner of Minnesota ADAS Solutions. So as far as the posts, the beams, they're painted yellow, and we wrap them, and those ones are covered in pine, but that's for the calibrating so that that doesn't pick up the steel beam.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Peters, are you currently operating your business within Bloomington or somewhere else, or is it a chain of businesses?
No, so Bloomington will be the training center with CarADAS, which is the licensed group. The way that we get vehicles is by partnering with locals. So right now, CarStar is willing to help us, and we have some from Walser. But we're not, like, open, ready to go. Normally, like Maple Grove, our location is wide open to the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. All right, this item does have a public hearing, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to testify can come up, sign in, introduce themselves, provide comment. Planning manager Markergard, is there anyone online wish to speak?
Chair Albrecht, do we have no one online for this item?
All right, going once, going twice. Absolutely, come on up.
Hello, my name is Michael Jokanen, the chief information officer for CarADAS. And for this building, it's so important for us to be able to provide training of all the makes, years and models of vehicles for the advanced driver assistance systems across the country. And we greatly appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify? All right, looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, having, yeah, so moved. And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. All right, open for discussion. Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Seems pretty straightforward to me. This will be a permitted use under the new plans, or under our new guidance from planning. Seems like a good educational facility as well as a employment facility for Bloomington. I share Commissioner Cookden's concerns about steel columns, but yellow paint is better than nothing. Older building, always nervous to be driving a car in there, but I'm in favor of this and plan to vote in favor of adopting, recommending. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Cookden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I agree, this is a pretty straightforward application. I'll be in support of it tonight. Yeah, I personally think a little protection around interior columns where there's vehicles moving, some ballards or something, really saves you a lot of trouble. When a car hits a column, it's a much worse problem than putting in a couple of ballards. So nothing to stop me from approving or recommending approval of this application.
Well, leave it to engineers to really find, I have no idea about any of that. So I also find it pretty straightforward. I appreciate that they wanted to move forward with a conditional use permit, even though it's going to be permitted, or potentially be permitted, not far away. So hopefully that helps speed along the process, and they can get going and get set up business in our community. That'd be great. So I am also in support. Looking for a motion. Commissioner McGovern.
Having been able to make the required findings, I move to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for an instructional center, subject to the conditions, code requirements listed in the resolution.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the recommendation on your screen. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 6-2-0. That item is a final decision by the planning commission unless an appeal is received by October 8th at 4:30 PM. Thank you. All right, we are on to our next item, which is item three. This is a study item, does not have a public hearing, and that is the update on the pavement management program. And I believe we have Senior Civil Engineer Bob Simons, and we have Engineer Julie Long as well. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. As you stated, Bob and I are going to be presenting our update on the pavement management program and our CIP transportation updates for the Commission's consideration in your role of advising on transportation items. So, the pavement management program has existed in Bloomington since 1991. The goal of it is to reduce the overall street repair cost by taking the right action at the right time. We use what we call the pavement condition index to help us select the streets. It's basically a grade from zero to 100, with 100 being a brand-new street and zero being a street that has deteriorated into gravel. And then we also use that to help prepare forecasts for future years. We bid all our street segments together in one big project to get economies of scale. You'll see other communities will bid three or four separate pavement management projects. Bloomington has not done that. We find it's more cost-effective to build, bid them all together. So that lowers the assessments to the adjacent property owners and also lowers the city portion of the cost for all taxpayers. We have an assessment policy that costs shares with adjacent property, adjacent properties and city taxpayers. So single two and three family homes pay 25% of the cost of the project, and all other property types pay 50% of the cost, so commercial, industrial, and multifamily. So we have several different construction techniques that we put under the pavement management umbrella. The most expensive is the reconstruct, where we remove and replace the pavement. We install new curb and gutter if it isn't there, and we do that by hiring a contractor. The overlay is a more middle range of expense on the pavement management program, where we grind off a section of the pavement, the top, and then pave a new layer, and that is also done by a contractor. The seal coat is one of our lesser expensive maintenance activities to maintain our street system, where we apply a bituminous adhesive, we put aggregate on top, and then we sweep off the excess. That is done by a contractor as part of our South Metro Joint Powers Agreement. That is a fairly recent change. We've done two summers of seal coat with the Joint Powers Agreement. Prior to that, it was done by city staff, but we found that we got a better price and people who were willing to sell us the bituminous adhesive by joining the Joint Powers Agreement. We also include trails and sidewalk construction in our pavement management program that is also fairly new. Bloomington used to build trails and then walk away from them, and you can see that in some of the conditions, especially the one over on Normandale Boulevard, that that is not the right activity to do for pavement. So we'll remove and replace pavement or crack and fog seal those trails. You'll notice that there isn't an overlay on trails, and that's because, because they're not subject to the weight of a vehicle or a truck, they are not built as thick, and so there isn't enough structure on the pavement to mill that off and then repave it. And we'll do that either by the, a contractor or by the city maintenance division. So here's a pavement life cycle. The analogy I always like to use is an internal embustion vehicle. So if I bought a new vehicle and drove it off the lot, and I never did an oil change, and I never flushed the radiator, and never did any alignment transmission or anything, eventually my car is going to fail. So similarly, that's the first graph. So if we build a road and do nothing to it, on average, it's going to last about 20 years. It's a little higher if you're on the east side of Bloomington, where they've got nice sandy soil, which drains well. It's probably a little lower on the west side, where there's some clay soil that retains moisture, because water is the enemy of all pavement. What we're trying to do is extend the life of that pavement and make it more economically feasible for the taxpayer and anyone who is subject to an assessment. So you'll notice on the right-hand side, we show a graph that's kind of sawtoothed, where we're doing maintenance activities periodically. And so we'll do some seal coats, and then we'll do a bigger overlay project, and then we'll do some seal coats, and then another overlay. And so our goal is to extend the life of that pavement closer to 60, 70, maybe even 80 years. It really depends on where you are and on what side of the community and the existing soil conditions. But on average, what we're looking for is like a 70-year lifespan. So we have a bunch of existing street policies that were adopted by council in 2002. The first one is that any curb and, or any street that is reconstructed with the pavement management program will be reconstructed with curb and gutter. And we do that because we're trying to funnel the water either into the catch basin or prevent it from going out into the shoulder and getting underneath the structure of the road. So that is why curb and gutter is a good investment on our roads. We also have reconstruct street width, existing widths. You can see we have a different chart on that. We will vary from this policy on occasion, and we have a couple examples to talk to you about, where we're going to propose something different to city council on road width, and we'll get into more details. If a street has existing curb and gutter, it's reconstructed to the current width. We've had discussions with city council, and at this point in time, because that curb and gutter is still viable and does not need to be replaced, they have been reluctant to pull it out just to narrow the road. But if we have another reason to narrow the road, most often sanitary sewer projects, that's our opportunity to look at trying to narrow the streets and slow down some of the traffic. And then if we do happen to narrow the road to a certain width, it does limit the parking, and that is often driven by the winter season and snowplows and the ability for them to get by. Last winter was lovely from a snowplow standpoint. The winter prior to that was pretty awful, and you remember hearing other communities, you know, stop allowing parking on streets because the plows couldn't get through because of the amount of snow, so. So this is kind of our complete streets policy. We adopted this in 2012. We look at existing conditions, demand, different policies and plans that are in place, like our alternative transportation plan. And then we take that and include that in both the project design, and then during construction, we look at considerations, because we know that if you have a bike detour, that is much more challenging than a detour for vehicles. So are there opportunities for us to make different choices? Just to kind of review what kind of complete streets amenities we were able to do in 2023. Last year, we installed nine new pedestrian ramps, 93 remove and replace pedestrian ramps so that they were ADA compliant. We installed 670 linear feet of new sidewalk to fill in a gap, and 0.23 miles of a multimodal trail. Again, we're trying to fill in those gaps where they are. We replaced 4,800 linear feet of sidewalk to make sure that we were ADA compliant with the trips and displacements. We built 0.9 miles of bike lanes and installed 10 bike racks. So we kind of use the pavement management program as an opportunity to build out some of our multimodal infrastructure. We know that this is an area that the city is lacking, but we find that it's a good opportunity. I recently did a little analysis on our proposed capital improvement program, and we realized that we're spending about 25% of what engineering does is in that multimodal area, which was surprising to us. We thought we were doing less. The livability of local street initiative, like I mentioned earlier, we'll talk about street width alterations with those opportunities where we can re- where we can replace curb and gutter at an economical price because it's being removed for some other item. So this year, we have the eighty-second Street Water Main Project. So we took an existing forty-four foot wide road and narrowed it to thirty-eight feet. So we took that opportunity because we were going to be removing that curb and gutter because of the pipe installation. Where's the best place to put it back and still provide facilities? We have two projects that are upcoming in the capital improvement plan, a north and a south central sanitary sewer project. We anticipate looking at the road width on both of those projects and making the appropriate recommendations based on what is occurring in the community. I mentioned earlier, we're doing a lot of sidewalk and trail infills. Some of the recent ones are on Bloomington Avenue, West Seventy A Street and Ninety-fourth Street near the Normandale Community College. Park and Rec is currently doing a urban forestry master plan. And one of the things that we've asked them to include in their request for proposals is boulevard trees. We know that shade helps reduce the urban heat island and are there opportunities to balance the risk from a crash hitting a tree, but also providing a more comfortable walk for pedestrians? So we want to make sure that we're looking in, addressing that and making the best choice. And then also, as we're working with Met Transit, we're looking at different transit priority on a couple different projects. You've probably seen a lot of red paint going down in Minneapolis. You can see the red paint that's already existing underneath the Orange Line Tunnel under four ninety-four. That is becoming a more common thing for people to see. And that means that that is a bus only lane. We're also looking at maybe giving transit signal preemption where the bus gets, you know, a ten second head start or a five second head start as opposed to other vehicles, just to help get them on time to where they are so that more people will use transit and help us reduce the greenhouse gas and help us achieve our climate goals. So how we pay for this is using the state statute four twenty-nine. That's for special assessments and that this is for the reconstruct. The overlays and seal coats are paid for either by what we receive on gas tax or some of our franchise fees. But the special assessments are for the most expensive project, the reconstruct. So we use four twenty-nine. Our assessment policy has been in place since nineteen sixty-two. We do it based on an adjusted front foot. And we're trying to make everything basically an imaginary rectangle so we can compare different lots because we know that we've got pie shaped lots on cul-de-sacs. People live on corners. They shouldn't be penalized for having, you know, a corner lot. We have other odd shaped lots, shallow lots. So we're trying to make everyone as fair as possible. No assessment policy is completely fair. It doesn't matter what system you're using. There's always going to be someone who's a winner and someone who's a loser. But because we've done this since nineteen sixty-two, we can say that we've consistently applied it and it's gone pretty well for us. So in summary, we're kind of trying to do the right action at the right time to prolong the pavement life, keep our city infrastructure in good condition, maintain or increase property values and reduce the overall costs to the taxpayers and people who have to pay assessments. This is kind of our timeline. In the in the first year, like this past spring, we did what we call the pavement management drive around. So we drive the streets that the computer says this is where the P C I's are to visually confirm that that is what is actually happening out in the field. In the summer, we have a P M P scoping meeting with not only engineering and planning, but we also invite Park and Rec, people from Fire, just to make sure everyone in the city gets a chance to say what their concerns are about a particular street segment. Then we come to you, that's the one star. Then we calculate preliminary estimates of the project and the assessment and we send that out. We hold a neighborhood meeting and then we go to council to order the project. So all of this is coming up here in October and November. The public hearing to order the project is on November eighteenth this year. Then we'll come back. Some of you who have been here before, it's usually Amy Marone and she'll tell you what we're doing special in the design of how like we've taken it further. We'll do the final design. And then we bid the project in the spring. And Bob's team monitors the construction in the summer. Again, we do final assessments in the fall. So for this year's projects, we've held the neighborhood meeting for the assessment. And the assessment is, the public hearing is scheduled for October fourteenth. And at that night, we're hoping council adopts the assessment role. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Simons to talk about the next two years of projects.
All right, thank you Julie and good evening. As mentioned earlier, I'm Bob Simons. I'm a Senior Civil Engineer in our Street Design and Infrastructure area of Engineering. I'll run through the next two years. Some of these may be repeats to some of you because sometimes projects get pushed from year to year. But I'll highlight a few different areas from the next two years. If there's anything that you saw in the packet that you'd like us to bring up, we'll just be highlighting a few where we have some transportation and multimodal components. But if there's any other areas that you noticed you wanted to discuss, please feel free to bring them up. So for the twenty-five one-on-one, our P M P reconstruction project for this year, we have four areas we're going to highlight. First of which is eighty-fourth Street area. It's eighty-fourth Street from Portland over to Old Cedar, also including Oakland and Fifteenth Avenue. Some of the segments, Oakland and Fifteenth, don't have existing curb and gutter. So we'll look at installing curb and gutter with the project. Typically on these longer segments like our eighty-fourth Streets or Ninetieth Streets where we're getting into neighborhoods, we'll look at the intersection control in the area to see where we have uncontrolled intersections, controlled intersections. We know at Park and Eighty-Fourth and Chicago and Eighty-Fourth, we currently have some four-way stops there. So we'll be looking at those and seeing what we've had for compliance. And also we'll be looking at sidewalk connections. As Julie mentioned, we try to look at sidewalk infills, filling gaps with these P M P projects. So we'll be looking at sidewalk connections on the south side of eighty-fourth near Wright's Lake, Wright's Lake Park in that southeast corner there to connect to Wright's Lake Park from Old Cedar. And then also on the south side of eighty-fourth from twelfth to Old Cedar, possibly looking at filling a gap there. We'll look and see if it's feasible to connect to this walk that continues to head west on eighty-fourth. The next area we'll highlight is Twelfth Avenue from Ninety-second to Ninety-fourth Street. It's one of the few segments in this area along twelfth that does not have existing curb and gutter. So we'd be installing it with the project. And we'll be looking at what the desired cross section may be in this area, looking at the possibility of some bike lane additions. And then also continuing, once again, filling a sidewalk gap, continuing sidewalk from Ninety-Fourth up to Ninety-second. And we understand that with the four ninety-four work that's going on, we're probably going to be seeing a change in traffic patterns with the access and the removal of ramps at four ninety-four. So we'll keep that in mind as we're going through our design. Another area to highlight is one hundred and fifth Street. This has kind of been the forgotten roadway. It's south side of Gas for Less, south of Old Shock. Basically serves as a one-way right now and no existing curb. And this is one of those areas where, as Julie mentioned, we look into areas where we could possibly be reducing width. This is one of those areas that we could look at doing that. It's basically just serves the two properties on the south side and then that gas, the gas for less as well. So we'll look at the need for that access to the gas for less on one hundred and fifth. And then also, we have a connection over at Thomas. It's a right in, right out from one hundred and fifth currently. We're going to look at that as well, as well as parking in the area. But this would be one of those candidates where we could look at a reduced street width in the area based off the usage. And then we also have East Ninetieth Street, just a short segment from Old Cedar Avenue to its east terminus. Apartments, Cedar Crest Apartments on both sides of the of the roadway. Another one where we'll look at street widths, possibly reducing street width in this area. Looking at parking options, possibly the addition of sidewalk as well, a sidewalk connection to the apartments if we allow for street parking on the roadway. So just another, another one of those locations where we'll be looking at widths and sidewalk options. And then for our twenty-five overlay candidates, we have two areas that we're going to highlight this evening. First of which is the Nine Mile Creek area. It includes Nine Mile Creek Parkway from Ninetieth Street up to Stanley Avenue and then also Stanley Avenue from Nine Mile Creek Parkway up to eighty-fourth Street. We'll be looking at possibly changing to a two lane configuration on Nine Mile Creek Parkway with bike lanes. And also the intersection of Stanley Avenue and Nine Mile Creek Parkway. Currently, there's a lot of pay, large expansive pavement in that area. And it does come to a ninety degree corner, but we're looking at installing more of a ninety degree curve there, installing some curb and gutter so we can actually make that a curve. And then there'll be a fair amount of pavement to the north that we'd be removing. So we'll be looking at some possible rainwater garden or other treatment options that we could do in that added green space in that in that location. And then also, a lot of sidewalk I've been bringing up on these sites so far. But on Stanley Avenue from Nine Mile Creek Parkway to eighty-fourth Street, at previous neighborhood meetings, not necessarily individuals that lived on Stanley Avenue, but individuals in the neighborhood had brought up a suggestion for sidewalk along Stanley Avenue to make a connection between eighty-fourth and Nine Mile Creek Parkway. So we'll be looking to hold some neighborhood meetings with that with that area to see if that is an option that the neighborhood would be interested in. And with that, we'd most likely have to do some sort of a road diet out there to to reduce the width of the street if we did move forward with that, either with this project or with a with a future project. And then the last one for the twenty-five overlay is the France Avenue area. Includes France Avenue from Old Shockbe Road down to Overlook Drive and then also one hundred and tenth Street from Normandale over to France. We know there's been some speeding concerns along France Avenue. Just a few years ago, we installed some bump outs at the intersection of France and one hundred and eighth. And we're looking to do some additional traffic calming work along France Avenue south of one hundred and eighth between there and Overlook Drive. Possibly also extending the limits south of Overlook Drive. There's an existing, if you drive the area, there's an existing at-grade concrete median in that area that we don't really see the need for it to be there. But looking at options, traffic calming options in that area as well with this project. And then there's multiple retaining walls along one hundred and tenth Street of all different sizes that we'll probably need to replace some of those with the project and maybe remove a few if we can remove and just grade the yards back. So that sums up the twenty-five work and I'll go two years out to the two thousand and twenty-six reconstruct and overlay candidates. We just have one candidate to highlight for the two thousand and twenty-six reconstruct project and that's West Bush Lake Road on the west side of town. It includes West Bush Lake Road from Highway Drive down to eighty-sixth Street. Our traffic and engineering staff will be reviewing, there's some median locations and some existing right turn lanes along this stretch that we'll look at if the validity of keeping those. And then also, there is a fair amount of retaining wall and sanitary sewer work that'll be included with this project. And I should mention that there's been brought up in the past about pedestrian crossings at Highway Drive, interest in some different locations of pedestrian crossings on Highway Drive, that that would be something that would be included with a separate project. And then we have four areas to highlight for our two thousand and twenty-six overlay. First of which is West Ninety-Eighth Street, just west of here from France to Penn. Our traffic staff will begin a study to review the lane configuration and look at a possible lane conversion for that segment of Ninety-Eighth Street. And also look at the phasing of the signal at Ninety-Eighth and Penn as well. I'm working with Hennepin County on that. We are currently, as I'm sure you've seen, on Ninety-Eighth and Xerxes installing a pedestrian crossing. This year, it's currently under construction. Whatever striping configuration we go with, whether it's the existing or a new proposed three lane configuration, that setup for that pedestrian crossing will work for for both of those those configurations. Then we have Hopkins Road from Lyndale Avenue to Hopkins Circle. That intersection of Hopkins Road and Mission Road is kind of a large, once again, a large expansive area of pavement and not the safest intersection. I believe there's a yield condition as you're heading north on Hopkins Road currently. So we'd be looking at possibly making this more of a ninety degree corner with a stop condition. But it's something that we'll be reviewing and see what we have for existing right of way and for space in that area. Then we have our Chicago Avenue area, Chicago Avenue from Seventy-eighth down to Eightieth and then Eightieth from Chicago over to Twelfth. Over the past few years, probably six or seven years, we've added some sidewalk along Chicago Avenue and filled some gaps. We'll be looking at doing that same thing along Eightieth where feasible. There's a few locations where with development, they've been installing sidewalk, but that's leaving a few gaps. So we'll see if there's areas that we can fill with that project. And then finally, our twenty-six, last twenty-six overlay candidate is East Old Shockbe Road up in the South Loop area, from Twenty-fourth all the way up to Thirty-fourth and American and then continuing east on American up to the east terminus. We'll be looking at when we come through with this project, lane usage and striping in the area, reviewing what the needs are in that area, what could be changed, what could be modified. And then also in our C I P, we currently have a project for a multimodal or a multi, multi-use trail or on-road facility, some sort of multimodal use along this stretch. So we'd be looking at how we could prepare for that as well when we come through for an overlay project. And then lastly, I'll highlight just two projects, other C I P transportation projects. And a few of these, you've probably, at least I know the Normandale project, we've mentioned a few times before, but both of them are coming up in the near future. So the first one is that Normandale Boulevard project, Normandale Boulevard from Ninety-fourth down to Old Shockbe Road. Those of you, and I know you've, most of you have been out there, but the trails and the sidewalks are not in very good condition out there right now. Some of them are downtown pretty much gravel. So we're looking at a multi-use trail on the west side of Normandale Boulevard and a sidewalk on the east side. We did some community engagement back in two thousand and twenty-two before we applied for some regional, regional solicitations for some federal funding. And we were successful in in a few different grants. We were receiving both a state grant and also a federal grant in the carbon reduction area for Safe Roots to School. And also the Hennepin County funds that'll be in franchise fee funding that would be used for this project as well. But for this project, we're looking to begin right of way acquisition, easement acquisition. We're going to have to be installing a few retaining walls. And with a multi-use trail project, I'm going to need some easement acquisition as well, temporary and permanent easements. So we'll be looking to start that process here in two thousand and twenty-five. We'll be holding a neighborhood meeting here later this fall to review with the neighborhood. And then continue design with construction, possibly to start in late two thousand and twenty-five, but most likely two thousand and twenty-six and to two thousand and twenty-seven for that project. And then finally, we have our Safe Roots to School, Valley View Schools project. For this project, similar to Normandale Boulevard, we've, we received federal funding in the amount of, I believe, just about four hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk installation on the north side of ADA Street between Nicolet and Portland, so adjacent to the Valley View Schools campus. And then with this project, we'd also look at modifying the pedestrian crossing of Portland Avenue at Bischoff. Currently, it's on the north side of Bischoff. We look to move it to the south side to reduce the turning movement conflicts and then also add a pedestrian refuge island in there as well. And that project, we're also moving along with design currently on that project. We'll be having a neighborhood meeting here this fall as well and then ordering that project and then moving forward with construction in two thousand and twenty-five for that one. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have. Or like I said, if there's any other sites on the areas that you saw in the packet you want us to bring up, we certainly can.
Thank you. Questions for staff, Commissioner Cunningham?
Thank you Chair. First of all, I just want to say thanks for a comprehensive presentation. I know that a lot of work goes into this plan, so impressive. Couple, two quick questions. First one, it's two thousand and twenty-six on the plan for there was an overlay kind of a Ninety-Eighth in front of the Ice Garden. I just want to, have we thought about the construction and renovation of the Ice Garden and kind of construction traffic on a brand new road? I just don't, has the timeline of that project been kind of coordinated with the mill and overlay plan?
Yes Commissioner, we have been discussing that with with the the big group, if you want to call it that, that's doing the design and the construction for that. And we initially had this segment of Ninety-Eighth Street on the, I don't know why I backed up Old Shockbe Road, the segment of Ninety-Eighth Street on our, for our two thousand and twenty-five project. But we backed it off because of of that project as well as other construction in the area so that we could kind of be coming in at the end, at the tail end of that work, so.
Got it. Second question was the Chicago Avenue between four ninety-four and Eightieth. I believe Chicago's getting a pedestrian bridge over four ninety-four, so that's the reason for the the sidewalk improvements there? Kind of bringing everybody into Smith Park that wants to cross the interstate? I guess, sorry, that wasn't really a question, but is that the reason for that?
It shows up on our need for using the pavement condition index for needing improvements in that area. And so this is our opportunity and it does dovetail nicely with the four ninety-four project and the new bridge and some of the work that Mr. Simons mentioned earlier. So yeah, we think it's a win-win for everyone, whether they want to go to Smith Park or Walmart or visit a friend in one of those apartments or elsewhere in Bloomington.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Commissioner Cookden?
Thanks ma'am Chair. Mr. Simons, could you go back to the South Loop one? So the terminus of American Boulevard, there's kind of a road to nowhere. There's like an awkward cul-de-sac at the end. Why do we have that segment and why not just cut the road back to the visitor's center?
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookden, that is a connection that I believe emergency services wanted to help access into some of the remote areas. It also connects to the trail that's on the four ninety-four bridge. Remote areas. It also connects to the trail that's on the four ninety-four bridge. And so they were originally hoping that is why it got put in there. We have not talked to them about shrinking it. We can certainly reach out to them to see if this is the appropriate time. I suspect they're going to tell us no, but we're happy to go ask them that.
Probably worth a question. While we're here, I see Thirty-Fourth Avenue stopping at American Boulevard. They're not going north. Was, why is that? Why not finish off Thirty-Fourth up to the Diamond Interchange?
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookden, because. The light rail project went through that area recently. That actual pavement service, surface is not ready for a, an overlay. We do have elsewhere in our capital improvement plan. Proposal to get better bike and pedestrian facilities through that corridor because it's a little awkward. But that is why it is not included, because the pavement condition index is of high enough value that it didn't make sense to include it at this time.
Okay. Yeah, you kind of stole my thunder there, but having a sidewalk on the west side of Thirty-Fourth Avenue, I think would be a huge improvement. That Holiday Station across four ninety-four gets a lot of pedestrian traffic and people just don't want to cross that many lanes of traffic, so they walk where they shouldn't. And as someone who drives that a lot, it's kind of dangerous with, where people are walking and stuff. So when we are ready for that, I strongly desire to get a sidewalk connection up to that Holiday Station. I do just have one other question or comment, so. I think this one we have in front of us here is the only stretch of Old Shocky Road we're doing, but for the rest of Old Shocky Road where we have the curb walks. Has there been any movement with Hennepin County on being able to get real sidewalks there and alleviate that condition?
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookden, there has not been enough movement to report back to you on that. They have heard me, because they now repeat it back to me, because they tell me that their next priority is Penn Avenue, and I tell them my next priority is Old Shocky Road. And I will also invite you and the public, there is currently, I, I can't remember the exact website, I'll probably find it, but it's like Hello Hennepin or something. Where they're soliciting input on their Hennepin County roads. So if any or all of you wanted to put in some comments on Old Shocky Road, I would be indebted to you. But they are also, similar to us, where they are also working on filling in gaps and what have you. I have recently talked to one of their staff members that a gap that would be lovely to fill in would be from. The Nocomis Minnesota River Trail, near Highway seventy-seven. Up to like Fire Station Three where the city has left off on our trail. So that would be a nice gap infill to kind of start the conversation on Old Shocky Road. And they didn't say no, they didn't say yes either, so we'll see how that goes.
If we could get an email with that link in it, I'd be more than happy to support the cause there. I think that's the most dangerous pedestrian condition we have in the city, and I can't wait to get rid of it.
Hey, as someone who lives on Old Shocky Road, I totally agree. I do not walk my dogs in that area. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Isa.
I think the PMP program is really, it's amazing, it's proactive, you know, involves all stakeholders, neighbors. The question I had is, I know you mentioned. A dual-purpose addition like Boulevard trees, right? Is that being considered specifically somewhere? Or was it just kind of? I guess, I, yeah.
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Isa, it's too soon to say. As I mentioned, Park and Rec is working on a request for proposals to look at our urban forestry program. But it is one of our goals and we have, they have outlined that in the request. Because we do want to study that and see how we can do that better going forward. At this time, we don't even have the consultants to do the study, so I, we don't have any results, so I can't say, oh yeah, we're going to put them on this street. But we understand the need for a diverse tree canopy with different species and. Different ages of trees and like I mentioned earlier, the urban heat islands. But again, we're also engineers, so we like to balance risk. Sometimes when you put a fixed object in the right-of-way, if, if a driver loses control, there is an object to run into. So we, we're not a big fan of that. So we want to make sure that we put them in in the right spots. And that they do the best good for the community and weigh all the different risks.
Thank you. One more question. As far as, you know, when you're, I guess, I've always wondered this, when the city, how does a city? How do contractors, how do we make sure that? Whatever project, you know, the city puts up, is it like, do contractors bid to ensure, you know, that? How do I even word this? Something that, so let's say, you know, for sidewalk, for example, we, we're building a sidewalk. Do we send out a bid for contractors to bid, or, you know, how do we ensure that it's quality and also we're cost-effective with tax payers money? Essentially is my question.
I can take that one. Commissioner Isa, we're, we're, when we, when, for all these projects, Julie mentioned our, our reconstruct projects and our overlay project and our trail projects as well. We go out for bid for those, we put the design package together, we put the specifications together, we put the plan sets together, and then we put those out for bid for contractors to bid on. We have a pool of contractors that typically bid on our, on our PMP projects and our projects in general for this trails or PMP, whatever it might be. And they are required to be, meet responsible contractor requirements. We do have, we don't, we don't have a. Well, what we use is a low bid, a low bid, so we take the low bid from the contractor, but we, they have to be sure that they're a responsible contractor. They have to submit their responsible contractor certifications. If we've had issues with them in the past, and we haven't done this before, but we've, if we've had issues with them in the past, we'll discuss it internally if need be. But ultimately, we need to go with the, the low bid. We have a good pool of contractors that we've been working with over the years. But we put a design package out for bid to the contractors. We have a bid opening, we get that, we take the low bid. We make sure that they're, they're all of the information that they submitted, that they're a responsible contractor, they're responsive to the bid. And then we'll, we'll award the low bid to that contractor. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that makes total sense. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
I have a couple of comments. One being, thank you for explaining why we do curb and gutter, because I've always walked down streets with no curb and gutter and thought, this is actually kind of nice. But now I understand, so that was helpful. And it makes a lot of sense why we do it. The other comment that I have is, actually, this is a great slide. I have noticed when you drive down Old Shocky Road in this area that people don't necessarily even stay within the lines. Who are drivers, so I think because some of the curves are unanticipated. For some drivers, if you're not familiar with this area, you tend to speed up and then it becomes quick to turn. And so that should be a consideration for a multi-use trail, because I definitely think this would be useful for. You know, a safe bikeway, particularly to get down to that. Nature Center, Wildlife Refuge Center. With strollers and kids and all kinds of stuff, so. That would be my one comment about that area.
Commissioner McGovern.
Mary Ann Off, what you're talking about, have they considered putting in rumble strips on Old Shocky? To kind of keep people in their lane for pedestrians, bikers, or. Just keeping the car in the lane. It's a nice safety feature to have. But I know the pros and cons of that, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Commissioner McGovern, it, it's something we can look into. It's not, not something we've typically done in the past is rumble strips. But it's, it's, it could be one of the options within our traffic calming techniques, but. It could be one of our tools in our toolbox, I guess. It's not something we've looked at or discussed specifically on Old Shocky Road. But we can take note of that.
Commissioner Cookden.
Thanks ma'am Chair. As we're looking at this, so when Mac put in runway one seven-three-five, there was that neighborhood down there that got abandoned and demolished. And there's still a couple of streets there, some cul-de-sacs, roundabouts or whatever, still there. Does the city own that pavement and is there a plan to take it out, or what's the plan there?
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookden, yes, we do still own right-of-way in that area. We also, a couple of those lots are under proposal for redevelopment, and so that road may go away. In the interim use, we haven't, luckily, kind of jinx us, had a windstorm where we needed to use that. But in one of the previous windstorms, we used some of that land to help stage the cleanup. And then take it to St. Paul, where they used the downfall for electricity. So we'll. We're still looking at it. I don't know that there's a set plan until there's an actual development application.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Did you get what you're looking for from us?
We did, and we appreciate your suggestions of looking at the cul-de-sacs, rumble strips, and we've got notes, so thank you, and we'll bring it back in January.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to item four, which is consideration for approval of the draft September fifth Planning Commission meeting synopsis. Looking for a motion on that item. Commissioner Cunningham, Commissioner Albrecht, myself, Commissioner Cookden, Commissioner Isa and Commissioner Curry were all in attendance. Commissioner McGovern and Commissioner White were not in attendance.
Chair, point of order question, since I had to abstain due to a conflict of interest from one of the items. Am I permitted to approve these minutes?
Planning Manager Mark Regard.
Yes, Chair Albrecht, I, I don't know of any restriction on that.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Cookden.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting synopsis from September fifth, twenty-twenty-four as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed and any who abstain. All right. That motion passes. All right, and now we're on to item five, which is a Planning Commission meeting, or Planning Commission Policy Issues Update. Planning Manager Mark Regard.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht and Commissioners, we have another meeting in one week, October tenth. We have three items on that agenda. Public hearing on our chapter nineteen to chapter twenty-one ordinance. Probably the largest ordinance you'll ever review in terms of pages on the Planning Commission. And then we have two study items, the South Loop District Plan update, our initial discussion on that. And then update on our miscellaneous issues ordinance. And then October twenty-fourth, we have another meeting scheduled, two study items on that agenda so far. And we'll be talking about missing metal housing. And then secondly, park dedication and planning standards. That's what we have in upcoming meetings.
Any issues that Commissioners would like to bring up or discuss? Commissioner Cookden.
Thanks ma'am Chair. I think this is a question for the Planning Manager. Do we have a limit on the amount of time an applicant can speak to their application?
Chair Cookden, the, yeah, commission has nothing in their rules of procedure in terms of limiting an applicant. We have had some discussion internally about that concept specifically with the legal department. We would have concerns with that and would not recommend it. Especially if there was a, you know, a condition of approval, maybe that there was some disagreement on or a recommendation of denial, something like that. We want to make sure that the applicant has sufficient time to present their full case. And if there were a legal challenge down the road, if they were limited, we're concerned that that could be. Negative for the city. At the same time, certainly a chair member could, you know, remind applicants that. You know, the hour or request that they kind of bring things to conclusion.
Very well. Sometimes, ma'am Chair, I think there's a, a feeling from members of the public, well, gosh, the applicant got to speak for twenty-five minutes and I only get three minutes and it feels a little unfair to them. But I understand the city's perspective. I don't think there's much we can do about it, but just wanted to voice that perspective.
Yeah, thank you. I agree, and I think it's something that we can look at managing sort of as we're in the meeting, so good suggestions there. Any other items that we want to discuss? All right, seeing none, that is the close of our Thursday, October third, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you.